Although they called the meeting commissioner's order and the meeting was being recorded. And he said, in this meeting, it comes part of record, we'll be posting on the county's YouTube channel in the near future. It's no cost for public hearing. I don't know, a little kind of old age discussion. The only thing on the agenda for today is Selahassan Axelrod is presenting our 2018 audit earlier than usual.
Yeah, about minimum seven months earlier than usual. So it's, you know, Eric and his team really stepped it up this year. They have a pleasure to work with, but I mean, in terms of getting the audit done, sitting here at this time, I don't like to give them credit there. He's really laid out the foundation to where things need to go from an audit perspective. Talk a little bit about the opinion real quick. We're getting really close to having a totally unmodified clean opinion, which I know when we started the year, we were pretty far away from that. And I think there's a plan in place to get it here in the next 12, 18 months to it, an unmodified opinion. So what's that mean? That means everything is clean, except, and this is an issue that you guys inherited obviously, capital assets. And it's crazy because it's, the accounting standards want capital assets recorded at any cost value. So it's not like you can get an insurance appraisal and record it in Markham. That's what the standards say. So that requires an appraisal, a separate appraisal. You can't piggyback off one you have. But I think the team here has plans to get that in place. So that's, that's great. Like I said, I think next year-
But you're briefly interject, we already passed the contract actually at the last meeting, so we are-
It's definitely happening.
It's happening in the next few weeks, so we should have that handled.
Yeah, then next year, next year, you know, I think A, this will, it will be done even earlier. I think we've talked with Eric and then that's the goal on everybody's part, which, which is great.
How often do those appraisals have to happen?
In theory, uh, once. I mean, it's about, it's more, you gotta get a good starting point, then it's about your process going forward. And I think Eric's given that a lot of thought, so he's ready for that.
Yeah, track costs.
Yeah, part of the problem was that it hadn't been done since 2004. It wasn't tracked all that well, so it took me- So it's been a long time.
Either not well or not at all. And so, so-
The new software will make that easier to do.
The new financial software we have, starting January 1, that's gonna, that's gonna really align well with this audit process. And then as we add assets in the future, the new software is very simple and easy to input the new data. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about that.
So the other major change, I'm gonna talk about, I'm talking about the opinion real quick though. Again, under the accounting standards, the Human Services wasn't always recorded as, as a whole different year end. They were June 30 year end, a different audit report, et cetera. That has all been brought into these financial statements now, which they should have always been. So that was a big one. You know, when you look at, you can't fix everything overnight. And so I think that was step one. And again, that was, that was Eric all putting that together. And then we got that done this year, so that's, that's been-
It's been actually really a great change to have Eric over both sides.
Yeah.
That wasn't something that we necessarily planned when we first hired Eric to put him in charge of the finances over at Human Services as well. But he took on the role and frankly, it's been, we've seen some benefits that I was anticipating. That's probably one of them. It's just very seamless now.
So there's any other questions about the audit opinion there? It's, like I said, it's, it's clean beyond the capital assets. And next year, I think it'll be perfectly squeaky clean, so. Um, just a couple of highlights, you know, I'll talk about. If you wanna flip to page 17. So we look at fund balances, 3.6 million. Then I focus on the general fund because all the rest of the fund balances, if there are any, are restricted of some sort. General funds in place usually has any unrestricted. So 3.6 million dollars of fund balance, that's 22% of current year general fund expenditures. That's one measurement that's, that's usually taken by outside agencies. That's, that's solid. The next step down is really the unassigned fund balance. In this case, about $930,000. That's just about 6% of current year general fund expenditures. It's on the, on the low side where GFOA recommends, but you're within that recommended range. So you're, you're, you're right there, so that's positive. And when you look at, you know, what are the assignments? You know, as with any big government, there's infrastructure needs in the future. And one and a half million of that is assigned for future capital projects, which is, you know, it's good. It gives you options of how you manage that versus maybe taking this sort of debt, things of that nature for counties. So I think it's, that's smart, financial projections, future projections. It is good. It's, it's good to be in that position. I mean, you're one of the very few counties that have no debt. I mean, we work with, I mean, Allegheny County is one of our clients. They do a 2, 3, 400 million dollar bond issue every year. You know, they do. But, but I mean, you go to smaller counties that we audit, it's, it's nothing for them to be sitting between 10 and 30 million dollars of general obligation. And counties relatively near your size. So, you know, that's a positive place to be sitting going forward. Another thing I'll talk about that's in the, that's gonna look brighter, a little more detailed. So I'll give a couple of highlights. Pension plan. I'm sure you guys deal with your local municipalities. Municipalities are struggling with their pension plans right now. They rely at a steep rate a lot of their funding. You guys are 86% funded on your plan, actually down to 100%. I think in the prior year, every plan to be in, in 2018. I think the investment was like a 5.6, 6% loss, which that, that's across the board. I'm talking within tens of percentage points to every, we, we go over 30 counties. Everyone looked at, was right there. My guess is right now, if you looked at it, given where the market bounced back here, you're probably back close to that 100%.
I think we are.
Yeah, I would expect.
Yeah, the fourth quarter was, and the market was rocky last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it looked really good, right?
But, but my point was even at 86% funded, that's still really, really good. This is the point I was trying to- That's still better than a lot of other counties. I think counties are typically funded fairly well. But why, you know, be surprised when you're down in the seventies? There's, there's, there's a share. Allegheny's always around 50%. I think it's different issues, but, but I mean, 86% of the way you cut it is, is really well funded. So I did wanna highlight that.
Uh, one new thing this year, there was a new accounting standard for your health insurance for retirees, your other personal employment benefit. So that liability, it jumped from 2 million to 6 million. It's not a liability for the general fund. You guys have been paying it as you go. Every year you pay the health insurance for retirees. County standards just require us to record that liability. This is what you're projected to have to pay currently for all employees and all retirees until that obligation will be satisfied. And like I said, it's in your budget anyway. You're already paying it, it's your, part of your insurance payments in the budget.
Just gotta stop it right there for a second. When you, so over the past 10 years, the government accounting standards board's been trying to close the loophole on not having all of long-term liabilities in the books. So that's really, they started with putting the pension in the books. Couple of years later, the other personal employment benefits. And a couple of years from now, coming up is the leases. So that really closes the loop on anything that could be out there. I mean, Enron, like that, everybody was trying to, I used to work at a big firm accounting firm. Everybody was trying to, how do we keep this stuff off our balance sheet? So basically any lease beyond 12 years, or 12 months, in a couple of years will be coming onto the books as well. But that's the purpose, was to getting away from avoiding the liabilities in the books.
Right, and that would just be cars and there's not that many of them.
And it'll be a 6 million.
Yeah.
4 million is one.
Yeah. I think we talked, I don't even know if cars would go on. Well, I guess you do, because you guys do enterprise.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we had talked about that. You guys did do a lease this past, in 2018, with motorola.
Yes.
So that, so that's on the legal one, right? Yeah, that's on the financial statements this year. But other than that, not a lot of changes. So if you look in, we keep the capital assets in here, but it's just-
Right.
What's ruled for from when we took over as auditors. So we have numbers, we have no comfort that they're actually correct. That would be on page 35. That's why the opinion says what it says. It'll be a fun exercise this year when we get an appraisal, see how close we run.
The truth is though, from a public perception, I mean, whether that number's really right or not, they're not liquid assets. You're a government, you're not selling them for cash or to make you profit. So in theory, it's irrelevant. I mean, to be honest with you, that, that number's irrelevant. It could be a million or 10 million. It's, it's irrelevant because you're doing what you have to from an insurance side, keeping things up as well as maintaining those assets, which is really the important piece of that versus a balance, it's just irrelevant, I would make that point.
And the reality is you paid off your general obligation bonds that you had in 2018. So you have no debt associated with any capital assets you have outside of the motorola lease, so.
You look at your peers, that's one of the things that they're struggling with is they keep refunding bonds. And so they're stretching out debt beyond the likelihood of assets, which is like economics 101 told to do that. You guys are, the county's done a good job of managing that.
Yeah, that's one of the main reasons we went with the EUM, GISA.
Um, page 38, that shows the pension. So you can see there that there was net investment income, almost the loss of almost 2 million dollars. So that's what took you, you have a pension asset, 2017, you have a pension liability this year, and 2 million dollars selling an investment income. They were projecting a gain with investment income. You got a loss, that's nothing to do with anybody, not even your guys. It was a loss across the board. If anyone has a 401K, they solve it too.
Yeah.
Let me show you where the new notes are. So page 42 starts on the new notes for the self-insurance, or the retiree self-insurance liabilities, the OPEB. And you can see on page 43 at the bottom there, that's where that liability is derived from. Um, it's very similar to the pension plan, only you don't have a trust for your OPEB. So you don't, it's not funded, so it's just all of the liability. There's no offset of assets like there is with the pension plan.
Have you seen any model where they do fund that?
That's a very question. I think firm law, we have one client.
I think there may be two or three in this state where they've actually funded it.
It's an interesting idea.
It is, and, and I know a lot of times I bring up Allegheny, they're pretty progressive on, on things like that. They talk about it, it becomes, it's a budgetary constraint. Like how do you fund that? How do you realistically fund it?
Yeah, right.
Why? They didn't, a bunch of places looked at trying to get there, they just couldn't find a way to budgetarily do it.
We have a lot of places, how, we talked about assigned fund balance. A lot of places assign fund balance for it, but then they never actually transfer it into a trust. So they have this money set aside in general fund for it, but they don't actually put it in a trust, which is almost the point. If you're gonna assign a fund balance, just put it in a trust and let it earn money for it.
Exactly. Heck yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, in theory, it wipes out a $6 million liability, but also a lot of places, when these liabilities came on the books, they did away with their plans. They said, okay, we're, going forward, no new employees are gonna have health insurance benefits.
Not even have to negotiate with, not only with the employees, but then with provider of benefits, I would think.
Right, this is one of the few standards that the accounting gods, I call them, came up with to try to impact policy. Usually it is purely about trying to improve financial reporting. In this case, it, it was to get a policy. And literally within 12, we, we used to have a lot of clients that had this, as current, current people in the plans, and most of them just shut it off right there.
Yeah.
Grandfathered everybody in, and so we're just watching it taper off at this point.
Yeah. This, that liability is for big school districts.
Yeah, huge.
Because they're paying from 55 to 65 generally. They're paying for any teachers that retire. Teachers are generally around, allow them to retire at 55. So they have to pay that liability until they get medicated. So it's, you could have yours at 6 million, they could have 15, 20 million on liability in that account.
Our policy is similar, but the difference being that we don't have the mention. Similar to they want a patient officer, a corrections officer, et cetera.
Yeah, working 162.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But yeah, to answer your original question, everybody has the option to set up a trust, and I think one across the firm has. We meet with people all the time that wanna do it, and they do.
Yeah, well, it's something to take under advisement and think about.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you look on page 43 there, then the, that 274, the benefit payments, that's what you're paying. That was what you paid in 2018 for insurance. So maybe for the first 10 years, you're doubling that on the trust, on in, pay out.
I thought about doing that. Running into the same issue, you know, budgetary, it's all come inside of the budget and you fit, and you find that money, it starts, being that strategic in terms of thank you.
You talked about the future chairman's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and the- I can see why others don't deal with it. I mean, it's 10 years out, the likelihood of us being around in 10 years is, you know, benefiting from that wisdom is small.
Yeah, but that's one way to lock in the future boards, the, you made a good decision, they have to, I'm sure they'll talk endlessly about it. Yeah, that, so that added a lot of notes, but not, like I said, the, there was always a liability, it just jumped. It's just a different way of valuing it. The capital leases are on page 45. You can see the future payments for those down there on the annual lease. There is a compensated absences note down there. That's not the actual county. You guys don't pay out vacation, but Human Services does for the first, I think it's three months, a year or something. They're all carryover a certain amount. And costs are all included in its financial statement this year. That's a new note this year. And then you'll notice throughout these two, Rouse Estates, uh, major notes are in here too. Because Rouse Estates are a compelling unit, because the three commissioners make up the majority of the board there. I'm glad we threw it at all of us. Page 47, we talked about fund balance. So this is what all your fund balances are. So you see the top there is the general fund. So you have some restricted fund balance. That's for Marcelo Shea lines in the general fund. That has to be used in accordance with Act 13 on prisoner welfare, has to be used on prisoner welfare. And then the Help America Vote Act, cash account, that's in the federal grant that has to be used in accordance with those guidelines. So that's the restricted fund balance. And then you can see that are the assigned funds. That 587,000 is new this year. That's the general account of Human Services. And from talking with Eric and talking with Kathy, nobody was really around when it was originally set up. But basically, what we came to was there was originally money that came up to Human Services when they went up to where they are now from the Rouse, so.
Yes, that was explained to us when we came into office.
Yeah.
So it was different from what's supposed to be a development or something? Leftovers, not the right word, but it, it was assigned to them, and they were drawing off of it and then getting ever replenished, originally.
Yeah, it's basic, they use it for operating, they use it for timing purposes. Because their grants are on a reimbursement basis, so it was for. So there's a lot of ins and outs in there, but that's, the residual balance is the 587.
Yeah, and the, the purpose of keeping it that way was so that they don't draw from the county's funds during the off season, until we catch it.
Yeah.
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 That's what that's for.
Yeah, so that's why that's listed as assigned, because we can't technically show a, a general account that's not your general fund. So it has to be combined with the general fund. Because there's no revenue and expenses in that fund. It's just, it's basically just an operating reserve. So it's included in your general fund, and then we just assign it. And then the other ones are just, these are all the non-major funds at the bottom, restricted funds. So depending on what purpose, that's the register recorder, the prison, nine-to-one, domestic relations, all those are at the bottom. Um, page 48, there is a restatement to include that 587,000 and the compensated absences balance and the fixed assets from up there. And then there's another column, debt service was a major fund in years past, it's no longer a major fund. Uh, and then the bottom, that was the actual beginning of the year increase for the change in valuation for OPEB. So it was 7.2 million, then it went down throughout the year. So when we put, when we adopt a new standard like that, we don't put the end of the year balance on, we have to do it as a 1-1, and then show the current year activity. So that's why it was 7.2, but the end of balance was 6.8. Um, there is a note in there about expenditures, excess appropriations, and that's on the, you can look on page 50 for that. That's basically just your budget to actual. So there's your budget, and then the current year, there's a column for the current year results. And then the rest of the schedules there are really pension and OPEB related, and then the back schedules are other non-major funds. So a little more funds that, some of them, every year, I think a couple will drop off, because they're not, I mean, they, a lot of them don't, aren't required to be their own fund. Frankly, none of them are required to be their own fund. You could account for them in the general fund. Sometimes it's just easier to track them individually. But Eric's included enough, a little ones with a little activity since he got here. And that's all there really is. There wasn't any, like I said, it's better, we got rid of one of the qualifications where we said, which was the worst qualification in the opinion of disclaimer. We don't have a disclaimer, we just have a qualification about fixed assets, so.
Um, maybe referencing page 50. I think we may have had this conversation before, but I can't grab the answer. When do we need to do a budget adjustment? At what point is it like a 2% difference from the past budget? So I'm looking at the next few weeks and realizing, you know, if we're off on things, we need to be doing budget adjustments right now in order to make, you know, the 2019 budget better perform for next year. Does that seem like an area for the month?
Um, yeah, you can do budget, like we have counties that do them in the following year, as long as they're approved by you guys. So what you could do, we have counties that issue CAFRs that don't wanna show any variance of the budget. So the following May, they're adjusting the previous year's budget.
We decided the CAFRs make sense for a more accounting, it was just too small, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing that would help you with is, it sometimes helps with your bond reading, you have a lot of bond, I don't think you have any loans issuing any time soon, so.
No, so I don't think CAFR makes sense, but if it doesn't make sense to go back and do budget adjustments, then what?
I mean, at some point this year, it's, most of the budget's variance is because of the capital lease, the way we have to record it. It doesn't, you didn't budget for it because it's not actually a cash outlay, but we have, the way we have to show it accounting wise, it's 1.8 billion dollars of expense and revenue. So a lot of your expenses are off by that. That's why it's, was off, I don't know, 300 some thousand, other than that.
Right.
Not terrible, no. But if it was off, if there wasn't a reason for it, it was off 2.2 million, then we probably have to give you a finding for it.
That's, that's what they're taking? That's good to know.
Yeah, there's like material amounts of, it's not a material violation, you'll have to give you a finding for it, but $300,000 wouldn't, that's not considered material for the general fund.
Right. So if we could get that down to a couple of percentage points, that'd be helpful.
Right, and I mean, really outside of the capital lease, you're not that far off, because expenditures would have been about 400,000, but then your transfers out were under budget by 330,000. So really, it's not even 400,000 that you were off. And part of that, I mean, you, with the new system, you'll be better, better able to track it, but you don't have information of how you would adjust the budget right now.
That's, that's true.
But yeah, and I mean, I think you guys are aware of it too. Part of the problem was the taxes were budgeted at total levy, where you don't collect the total levy.
That was kind of a problem.
Probably the case, we would be in need of us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, are there any other questions on anything?
Well, my take away is, really since we flipped office, I feel like we've been planning to catch up, kind of put out fires and fix things. And I think we're done, all the fires are pretty much out. We've got an air control. And so, so now we've started looking at more of the strategic things, such as maybe funding the retirement account or something like that. Uh, what other things are you seeing counties doing that are, I guess, best practices and that we're pretty much done fixing stuff?
I, I qualify that, most, most wouldn't say they're done fixing stuff.
Yeah.
Or most wouldn't say they're not involved in it. Like you, I think you are, I've gotten further here.
Yeah, I would say that, yeah, I think your fires are for the most part out. And I think, I don't know, the, you have some capital projects going on, I think you have enough to fund currently. And you guys don't own bridges or roads or anything, so you don't-
We don't own the Mercer County, where we have to figure out how to fund 150 bridges.
Yeah, and that's a lot, yeah, that's why Allegheny County takes out 200 million dollars every other year, because they have to fix Alateen Bridges. They call Pittsburgh the city of bridges, and unfortunately for Allegheny County, they gotta pay for them.
Right.
So a lot of times, debt, everyone looks at debt as like the, the bad thing, the boogeyman. But if you have a big capital project, you're basically just spreading out the costs of that capital project over the life of the debt. You guys don't, I don't think you have any capital projects in mind.
That we can already, yeah, budget for.
Yeah.
That aren't really works. You know, we're, their advantage isn't being a small county, you know, where there, you don't have as much stuff to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, the goal is to get everything to, to fly off them, you know, get everything free, so you know, you know, wanting to do that, you know, it should be able to handle it.
Okay, the flip side is, well, we have supplied, you know, one clear field, particularly struggled with it. So they've tried to take the approach of funding all their capital projects currently with no debt, but here they are pushing with debt at max. Where it would have been, you, you gotta think of the flip side, the, the longer term play of, you have a chance to build up some reserves for future needs and, and make a steady debt payment that's easier to budget.
Absolutely.
Like you, working on a for-profit room for years, Shabbat was one of my clients. They had derivatives, which is what, they hedged everything from every raw material they had, interest rates, you name it, they hedged it. And the purpose was so they could actually budget. That was the whole purpose. They didn't, it wasn't so much about getting a gain or a loss, it's so they could budget and operate based on a budget. So there's two sides to that. It's great, if they're a small capital project, it is great to be able to pay for it cash as you go. But as Armstrong County is one of the clients, they just accumulated like three years' worth and they had something, they were fixing their item. It was a big piece of it, but it turned out to be $7 million. So like at that point, they, you know, pay that over the life of the asset. It's always, it's always about matching asset life versus debt life. Trying not to extend the debt beyond the asset, where you start getting high and get in trouble financially.
We have, we have two counties, I can think of off the top of my head, and it wouldn't, I'm not saying this won't make sense for you guys, because the pension plan is in good shape, but they have issued debt basically to lock in any future boards who are not funding the pension plan 100%. So they have issued debt and put it into the pension plan. I'm like, okay.
It's around the state, it's supposed to work out, don't you think?
Yeah, and, and the logic of it is they wanna do it because a lot of counties have made their bu, balanced their budget in a given year by not funding, say you're supposed to, your art is $300,000, they only give 150. It's not just the 150 that hits the pension liability then, it's the future earnings on that 150. So that's why Allegheny County's 40% funded, because they didn't fund their retirement correctly for five years, and now it's terribly-
I absolutely enjoy going down there and having them tell us how we should run our programs and stuff. It's always enjoyable.
I can say for Human Services-
I could have a big nice center to, to services to bring people to if I didn't fund their pension either.
Yeah, and they finally, they're the only ones that if you, if you were issuing debt, they're the only county we know of that the, the bond reading agencies actually ask about their pension plan. Because every other ones, you know, 80% are up funded, or even over 100, so they don't, the bond reading agencies don't care. Allegheny County, they're like, yeah- Cause every other one's, you know, eighty percent are up funded, or even over a hundred, so no, they don't, the bond reading agencies don't care about Allagana, they're like, yeah, we see the pension plan's fifty four percent funded. You know, what's, what's the issue for that, go, what's the remedy for that going forward?
That's one thing, that's, that's one of the couple of things that we've managed to do really well over the years, is keep the pension funded and not get, um, sides quite like that.
Yeah.
Which, that anything. You know, I, on the flip side, I totally agree with you on, you know, there's a lot of pressure to like, and I don't understa- I, I think a lot of it has to do with people getting into government that don't really understand how things work. Of of like never incurring debt, like never like doing cash across the board and like building up, you know, trying to, and and what happens is you don't, a lot of times you don't take care of the things that you've got properly, you don't plan ahead the way that you should, and and. That's how you end up waking up one day, and then all of a sudden, you've got a bunch of things that you've gotta fix, and you didn't, you know.
You gotta look at the market during, like look right now, you can, you can get interest rates on the expense side, so cheap monies, money's not free, but it's as close to it as it gets almost.
Yeah.
And then the long-term government market.
Yeah.
Versus what you could, if you kept cash around to, to build interest or invest.
That's like with the ABM thing, I mean, the, when we were even talking to them about it, you know, the whole idea was that it's cheaper to borrow, just straight borrow money than do the bond bit, and go through that whole thing, and that's how crazy, you know, that's how. You know. The, the money situation is, is so good, you know, if you were going to do those projects and you had to, you don't even plan for them, I was trying to do it, so.
Oh yeah, we have, most of our counties at this point don't issue bond, just go for a little bank and do it, so.
The issue with that is bonds, it's, it's the, the length of the debt, so notes, if you have a really good relationship with your local bank, you might be able to push them. Up to eighteen to twenty years, but usually it's fifteen and hundred, where bonds can go up to thirty. That's, that's the difference. You know, but then I'll answer your question on another level, so like best improvements, and and maybe as you're looking at your budget process, is a good time to uh maybe just adopt some fiscal policies.
Yeah.
Like.
We are on that.
No, no, it's, it's a good time to talk about that.
Yeah.
Talking about, like for instance, uh, maybe a, a fund balance, a general fund on the side, fund balance four.
Yeah.
Things of that nature, that's a, that's a good starting point, that, like some of the other counties have put in place, and they, they, they're, they're always budgeting for that in the future.
Yeah, that's one of the.
And it impacts their decisions.
One of the good things about that too is it has a, it creates a record.
Correct.
For everybody, you know, and I think that it's, you know, with turnover in government with elections and everything, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that can get lost, and you forget why they do stuff or don't do things. And so a lot of times having that stuff in the books is good, just so that everybody, you know, sticks with it.
You know, do you feel that everybody wants to, to, to leave it in better shape than they got, that's a really good way to.
Most of them.
Start taking that step.
Most of them do.
I mean, it's, it's a good way to start taking that step, kind of what Ryan was alluding to with funding pension plans.
Yeah.
Kind of the same time, so.
Yeah, well eventually you have to pay the piper, I mean, there's no, there's ways about it, you either have something or you don't have it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, and the counties that did take debt out to fund their pension plan, they basically locked in future boards into, hey, we already guaranteed your art for you, you have to pay the debt service, so.
Yeah, the last one we had is two years ago, they, the county, the previous board had not made various our payments, and and so, as Brian said, they wanted to lock them in, but then. The flip side of that, I'm an Uber's guy, I don't have to sell, like I'm, I'm borrowing funds for current operating use, cause that's really kind of what you're doing, nothing to pension it, but. I looked at it like, if you could refi, if you, if you had a mortgage at seven and a half percent, you could refi it for four hundred. Numbers wise, it makes all the sense in the world. That's kind of what we did.
Yeah.
As a big point in time.
Yeah, well, I mean, is the idea then too, that y- you're talking about borrowing and then locking everybody in, and they have like a, a debt payment, is the, on top of it, you have more money to invest in the current system, so. Actually, that makes a lot of sense.
Uh, there's, there's, you know, people argue, well, what happens if the market tanks, what if it tanks, you're gonna owe even more.
Well, even if we get Trump in office, it's just gonna keep going up. It's gonna go on forever, right? I can't, I can't give this one joke in a row, so.
Yeah, the only thing about those is you might pay a little higher interest rate if you use debt for that purpose, because it's taxable.
Oh, okay.
They're not taxed, they are.
Yeah, but like, so if you could borrow at.
Yeah.
Three point seven five percent, the taxable rate, I don't know what it is today, but might be four point.
Two or something.
Two, four point three, it's not drastically.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifty, sixty basis points different. Interesting.
But yeah, in theory, once you put, if you put five million dollars in today, it's gonna be worth a lot more than paying the debt service every year in any way.
It has the ability to earn investment earnings on that, starting today.
Yeah.
Versus what you put.
Yeah, your interest rate is four percent, you're projected to earn, it's in there, you're projected on seven and a half annually on.
Six, that's mounted to seven and a half, yeah, that's usually the range, right?
Yeah, so you're making, even if your interest rate is four and a half, you're making three percent more than what you're paying in interest, in theory. And that's why they do it, I mean, that's why, if you wanted to get on the route to setting up an OPEB trust, it might not be a bad idea to do that, and that's a lot easier to buy it for. Cause your first couple of years, art payments into a trust started from zero, probably be pretty high, but I mean, I, like I said, you, you'd be one of the only clients in the state we have that would set one up, and you'd be the only admin trust from PHS to set one up.
Nobody wants to do that.
But not that it's a bad idea, it's therefore.
No.
Well, it's.
It's that.
But I mean, it's also understanding that down the road, it's not gonna hit you with this company, I mean.
Right.
The company you're planning.
Yeah, eventually you're not gonna be paying out of the general fund for these health insurance payments, it's gonna be coming out of a trust fund, just like your pension payments to your retirees.
Yeah.
So eventually, down the road's gonna save you money on your budget.
Down the road, hopefully everyone remembers.
Good, and then else? Any other questions to the members?
Thank you very much for your work on this, really appreciate you guys, uh, putting, you know, doing, putting everything together, this is the best, you know, report we've had, and it's comprehensive, and and. Got it done earlier than we've had it done in the past, you know, so it's been really great for working with your organization.
We really appreciate any institutional knowledge you guys bring to the table, and your willingness to communicate with us, so we're making little things.
Yeah, that's what we're here for, and like I, Corey alluded to earlier, the idea is next year, we'll be sitting here in the summer.
Yeah, no, absolutely, there's a lot to say through, I mean.
Oh, the summer.
That's cool. That's cool.
I think about where we're at, we start in, in March, the, or till now, I mean.
I mean, last year, I only think we started the seventeen audit till September, August, September.
Yeah. All right, well, Larry Carter, if you wanna bring up?
No, this time, I think I already could go with D sets.
Yeah, if you heard, it might be lunch.
That's our goal. Then I have a morning, I have a scaly, and then.
We have any, uh, we don't have a commission fee, it's me.
No.
So, something over there, department updates, anybody, okay, anything you wanna add on your schedule? Um, we have the, Thursday, we're going to the forensic conference, but.
You are.
Oh, I.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
Okay. Okay, and the uh FYI, the police departments for the new radio system are coming over tomorrow, the lab is there all ready?
Awesome.
Okay, we are ready for our objective. That'll be it.
We're good.
All right, anything else? All right, very much, good night.